I'd like to call the Bloomington City Council to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Fazini.
Here.
Trustee Fruein.
Alderman.
I'm sorry, Alderman Fruein.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. And do we... Do we have any recognition appointments? I just have a... Okay, I'm sorry. If we move right ahead to the consent agenda then, are there any items that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? Again, these are considered to be non-controversial items. If one Alderman or man decides that there's a concern or a question, will we pull it? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Fazini. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Fruein. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruein.
For both the consent and regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, let's move on to the regular agenda. We have item 7A, and that's a text amendment to Chapter 8, Animals and Files Identification and Regulation of Vicious and Dangerous Dogs. We have budgeted approximately 20 minutes for this. I want to make something clear because we had... There's a little bit of a misconception about this. This is not the case that this was pursued because there was one incident. There were 96 people that had... Were some victims of some sort of attack by dogs, bites, to something more seriously, being mauled last year. So, this is more than just one single incident. If I could turn it over to David, you have a couple of remarks.
Mayor, just to kind of add to that, it's... Also, we continue to receive a lot of questions about whether or not we should adopt a breed-specific ordinance to prohibit certain breeds. And that was initially what was the focus of a lot of the research. However, when it was determined that would not be a reasonable policy to bring before you, we started to go back, work with our police department, the McLean County Animal Control, and others to see, okay, is there changes, amendments to the ordinance that would be more appropriate to assist the police in both the enforcement and to try to prevent or to mitigate, you know, and hopefully reduce the number of bites going forward in the future. What I'd like to do is ask Alex McElroy on this...
Actually, David, before that, if I could just make sure we got a motion, first and second. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it down.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay. And so, we have a motion and a second. I meant to do that up front. And Alex, are you... Can you come forward? Thank you.
I'm gonna have... Alex is just gonna give a very brief presentation on the recommended ordinance amendments tonight, so... Alex McElroy.
Thank you. Started with one small folder on this issue, and now I have several that look like this. I'd first like to note the amount of attention and due diligence that I think council has provided this issue. I know the first time we brought it back to the full council in May, May 13, that we learned of some concerns from a Wishbone organization that there may be some contention with some of the language. I know that a lot of council members, after listening to that concern, really stepped up, made sure that they had the opportunity to meet with staff and elected officials to voice their concerns, so very commendable efforts. Pertaining to the ordinance before you today, in 2010, there were 77 dog bite reports made. In 2011, there were 65 dog bite reports made. And as Mayor Renner pointed out, last year, there were 96 dog bite reports made, which averages eight per month. As of March 30, 2013, there were already 14 dog bite reports. I think that's the latest number we were able to pull. This unfortunately is an issue for our police department. And back in November of 2012, council asked staff to review our current ordinances and see if we were doing everything that we could to promote public safety as we attempt to cohabitate with our canine companions. After seven months of reviewing the language, talking with frontline officers, and researching national trends in public policy, we have identified these proposed ordinance amendments before you today. This is not to say that in the future, we may wish to continue to research alternative approaches and potentially experiment with different procedures. But the proposed ordinance amendments that we bring before you today have been vetted by our staff and our research and discussions with professionals in the field. Our cooperation and collaboration with animal control advocates will certainly not cease after the adoption of any new ordinance, but we think it's important that we consider what we have before us today and what staff has identified in enhancing public safety for our community. With that, I'll turn back over to City Manager.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. And Mayor, as you've got the motion, staff is recommending these amendments to the city council tonight, and we'll be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Okay. And just to clarify, we... This is the third time it's come before the council. The Public Safety Committee, I believe, had it twice. And of course, actually, Alderman Lauer and Alderman Sterns and I and Alex went to meet with the people from Wishbone to hear many of their concerns. And so, certainly, this has been a long process. We've also had people asking questions during the mayoral open houses, so we've had a lot of public input on this. Do we... Let me ask this. Do we have any questions if we want to begin to debate who would like to speak in terms of the debate? I'm just trying to allocate time. Okay. Three, four. Okay. So, let me start out. At that point, let's say everybody has about three minutes. I'm not gonna be draconian about it, but... And we'll start with the committee chair, Alderman Sage.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will repeat a number of the points that Alex already made. I also thought staff did a nice job of summarizing kind of the timeline of events and the activities that have taken place to this point in the staff backup. I will say to make... To echo something that Alex mentioned, and that is the importance, I think, of having an ongoing conversation. I'm gonna make a couple of suggestions here that maybe we work to include into the process going forward here. So, David, should the motion pass, what I'm gonna suggest is that why don't we come back... Can we have staff come back at the second meeting in September? That would give us about three months of experience with the new ordinance. We'll be through the summer. School will be back in session. There's a little bit of a transitional time there to see, just again, what the experience has been with the new ordinance. So, that would be my first suggestion. And if that's agreeable to the council as we start to talk through making the motion, we might want to just, I don't know necessarily, include that in the ordinance, but in terms of some additional staff direction. The other thing is, and I'll look to Barb for the second point, and that is, on the heels of that update at the second meeting in September, if we could have the Wishbone folks, let's see about putting them on the agenda for the October Public Safety Committee meeting. And at that point, we would ask them to, you know, bring kind of their next round of perhaps input, updates, enhancements to the ordinance at that point. Just to come back and start, you know, continue the conversation with the Public Safety Committee and see if there's anything meaningful that we can do at that point going forward. Interested in any, again, kind of initial council feedback to that, adjusting that or tweaking that? Otherwise, that would be the end of my comments, Mayor.
If we're just to clarify from City Manager Hales, putting it on the September council second meeting and then Public Safety Committee meeting in October, are there any logistical issues with that?
I was just gonna suggest maybe in September, we bring it back to the Public Safety Committee meeting first. Now, again, we share that agenda, all the findings report to the full council, and we certainly would invite Wishbone to be at that September Public Safety meeting as well as the following month to give feedback. So, if... Be my suggestion.
That's a better idea.
Okay. So, thank you. We feed off each other, right? Okay. Alderman Sterns.
Thank you. Once we have passed this ordinance, you know, I'm all for continuing the conversation. It's always good to have a conversation. But I'm a little bit confused about whether we would actually be then changing the ordinance because, to me, that's just another, whole nother process. A conversation is a good thing. However, I have... I still have several concerns about this ordinance, and they're beautifully summarized in Karen Schmidt's comments in these, so I can hardly do better than what she has laid out. I realize that as a home rule, apparently, and I'm sorry if I don't know all the particulars of home rule, but we have the ability to, for instance, have an ordinance that might conflict with state law, and that was my question here. And the answer is yes, but we can do that. But my concern is, maybe we can do it, but should we do it? I think, in my own view, it's unfortunate that this has taken a rather long time and that it's been back and forth. But I think that, for instance, we now know that neither Wishbone nor McLean County Humane Society agrees with this. And frankly, I can't support it because a conversation is not going to change, I don't think, the ordinance. And one of the things that conflicts with state law is the whole concept of somebody's dog is declared dangerous or vicious or whatever. What is the appeal process? The state law allows for that. For instance, let's say, you know, the dog is out on Constitution Trail, this is a good example, with their owner, and someone threatens the owner, and the dog appears aggressive. Because in our ordinance, the dog is not on its home turf, that dog could then be declared vicious or dangerous. So, I think there are just simply... I think we should really look at the state law. And at a minimum standard, I think we should conform to the state law because I think there are too many holes in this ordinance, and McLean County Humane Society, as well as Wishbone Rescue, their attorney, and I believe their veterinarian, agrees with this, with what I'm saying. So, this really concerns me. I understand the expedience of passing something, but if you don't pass the right thing, then I... I'm sorry, I just... I really can't support that. And I don't think this allows what the state allows in terms of an appeal process, in terms of what really is vicious or dangerous behavior. One last comment is that this leaves it to the arbitrary decision, I think, of the police chief, who certainly is capable of making great decisions, but he's extremely, extremely busy. And the state law allows for a board to determine, you know, would allow for a behavioral expert, allow for a lot of other judgment to be made. And frankly, I think the state law is right, and I think that we're stepping out of our bounds here, and that is why I don't support this. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I do really want to thank Alex and George Boyle for all the work that you put into this, and I really know that you've done a lot of research on this and all the time that all of us in our Public Safety Committee as well in terms of input. I think I'm concerned that we don't seem to have a regular process when we pass an ordinance where there is a friendly and committed group such as Wishbone Canine Rescue where we can encourage their continued involvement in enhancing ordinances, and I think we have a unique opportunity here. I am not... It's not very clear to me if we come back to this in September, will we be inviting them to provide additional amendments to this ordinance? Is that the intention? Are we going to ask them to continue to be engaged in helping us refine and improve this ordinance?
Definitely. And any other group that certainly wants to give input, suggestions on how the ordinance can be improved and made better.
Right. So, I mean, this ordinance is better than the one we currently have on the books, but the points that have been made to me and, you know, to others from Wishbone, I think, are significant and serious, and I really want to make sure that we have that clear pathway and clear linkage to those kinds of ideas that will make our own ordinance the very best it can be, and I appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
I think those are the... I have one quick question and perhaps a point of clarification. Just because we don't specify an appeal process, if the state law specifies an appeals process, then there is... Then we're subject to an appeals process, correct? You can always go to court, right?
Turn to the corporate counsel to answer that.
Yes. In fact, the... We're not able to tell the state court the exact appeal process. There's a misconception sometimes that we have to adopt the administrative review law, but only the state can do that. All we can do is, and this is what a person would be and what a lawyer would do, is apply to the court for what's called a petition for certiorari, and that's basically the same as an administrative appeal. So, in order for a dog to growl at Constitution Trail at somebody, first, they're going to have to convince somebody at Animal Control or the police department that this was a reasonable reaction by a person who believed they were about to be attacked. Second, it would have to get through the appeal process. And third, it would have to be subject to the courts, a third appeal essentially. And that's all assuming that some officer is going to ever charge a dog with that. In addition, a dangerous dog is not subject to euthanasia, which is another misconception.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay? I think we've actually...
Mayor, can I just make two other comments?
City Manager Hales.
I do want to point out that this... These amendments will improve, if not enhance, public safety for a couple of reasons. One, as we got started in working with our police officers, we heard a number of stories of how the current ordinance was not strong enough, had enough loopholes, that sometimes justice wasn't being served. So, that if we did have a vicious, dangerous dog, dog bite, things of this nature, sometimes we were not always successful in trying to prosecute, especially dog owners who were irresponsible. Secondly, another reason is that with the insurance requirement we have here, many dogs are in apartments, and many people nowadays do not carry apartment insurance. So, we have seen occasions where victims haven't been able to go back against the owner of the dogs and to cover even their medical bills. And as you saw in the research, State Farm shows that the typical dog bite medical costs are upwards of $30,000 or less. So, again, we're trying to look at for some of these gaps in victims, trying to get restitution, recovery for their medical bills, which hasn't been addressed in the current ordinance, and we're trying to help our police officers and others who are trying to keep and to minimize repeat bites and that by giving them tools that in the past, there has been loopholes, gaps in the ordinance and so forth. So, I think that's a very strong statement we need to make here tonight. These amendments will strengthen, you know, our ability to provide public safety and make sure victims, hopefully, you know, if owners of dogs follow through and comply with knowing that their medical costs, you know, will be taken care of. But again, people will have to purchase that insurance. So, those are some of the reasons we were bringing these enhancements to the council.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Well, you were supposed to tell me upfront. Okay, I'll give you... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't recognize, and that's my fault. Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment and then a question. I really enjoyed this process because I got kind of feedback from people on all sides of the issue. And when we... This was first brought to us several meetings ago, and we decided to table it. I mean, we heard concerns from organizations that had a stake in this process. And I know from my perspective, I received a number of comments from constituents who had noted that they had been attacked by a dog or were about to be attacked by a dog, and they found the current ordinance lacking. In fact, one person even noted to me, do I have to get bit before some action is taken? And we want to make sure that we address those types of concerns. I think that I would... I like Alderman Sage's idea of coming back to the council in September. I think with the direction that we've gotten to the point where, as I talk with organizations such as Wishbone about the ordinance, we're playing a lot of scenarios, a lot of what-ifs. So, you know, some what-ifs that I've heard are, you know, talked about the dog on the Constitution Trail, we've talked about, you know, a mother pup... A mother dog defending her puppies, you know, what happens in those situations? And so, I'd be curious to know how that's... How those scenarios have played out with the new ordinance. And then if we need to make adjustments at that time, we can. But I like... I think it's time that we move forward on this issue. My question would be, I'm looking here at page 172 of the packet. There is a email from Tim Anderson saying, from the Humane Society, on the statement proposed ordinance. Is that the McLean County Humane Society? The endorsement from Tim Anderson says that he agrees with the language that's in there. Which group is that? I'm confused. I thought they hadn't...
Scott, he amended that. He did agree, and then he changed it.
Oh, he's changed it subsequently?
We got an email from...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that.
No. He rescinded his earlier endorsement.
I may have missed that email in the flurry that came through.
Yeah, that came through end of... End of this past week.
Mr. Anderson here? Do we...
No, I don't think he's here. But I think if we wanted to suspend the rules, maybe Wishbone could possibly speak to this.
I don't want to watch down that route just yet, but I'm curious.
Karen, can you verify that?
I'm actually looking for the email right now. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the email right now. I received it today as a foreword, saying that he agreed with changing the need to change some of the language and definitions.
That he no longer endorsed it as it was, so...
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And Alderman Fruein, did you... Oh, okay. All righty. Well, I think at this point, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Aye is in favor, of course, of passing this amendment, and a no is opposed.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruein.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
No.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. And we move on to item 7B, Analysis of Bids and Approval of Contract for 2013 General Resurfacing. And David, you had a couple of remarks, and we might have Jim Karch come up?
Yes. Do just want to remind the council that due to your direction and approval of budgets, currently in this fiscal year, we have about $6 million appropriated. $4 million of that is for street resurfacing. And the next two items deal with bid approval for different aspects of that $4 million. I think it's always helpful to kind of remind everyone that this $4 million is about a $3.5 million increase from four years ago, so your priority of continuing to increase and to make greater investments in trying to rehabilitate our streets throughout the city continues to show through, you know, in the budgets that you have adopted. I'd like to ask Jim Karch, our Director of Public Works, to make a few comments on this project because this work, both for this and the next item, will be taking place throughout the city. Many property owners and citizens will be impacted due to the construction activity, and so, there's a few things I'd like to have Mr. Karch comment on in connection with this particular large street resurfacing project. Jim?
Thank you, City Manager Hales. Mayor and City Council, tonight, as we normally do every year, we try to present to you a brief presentation on our pavement management program to try to highlight. You can see up on the screen and soon probably up on the two left screens, so my apologies for this being right behind you. Probably shortly, it'll be on the two side screens, as if on cue. Thank you, Scott. So, the... What you'll see before you is a brief presentation highlighting the many different facets of a pavement management program that we have at the City of Bloomington. We do this about every year. We like to take before the council and let you know what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, what we like to do is just focus on, you know, the pavement management program overall is there because of the issues that we have with our streets. As we drive our streets, we know that the streets maybe aren't in the condition that we would like them to be ultimately. And so, what we're trying to do is, how do we deal with that? We presented to the council over time, numbers, objective criteria, kind of showing overall the ratings of our streets and the overall dollars and costs that it will take to be able to get there. Public Works, we believe in asset rating. We're trying to do that as much as possible, and we're utilizing that to come up with numbers to be able to justify expenditures. This helps the citizens to understand why we're spending the money and where we spend the money. But then also, then, as we move forward, we like to let you know we have multiple different approaches with this. As we shared with you before, we use our geographic information system, and we use a nationally recognized Pazer rating system that is done and utilized by our own internal staff to rate the system and use our GIS on it. But we don't just try to rate things. That doesn't help you if you don't utilize that. So, what we then have tried to expand into is, we'll be talking about proactive preventative maintenance and then using our own crews effectively. They have done a great job of expanding and doing a lot of permanent pothole patching and then an effective resurfacing program. First, the permanent pothole patching in the past few years, again, great thanks to council. They've allowed us to expand our equipment, and we now have wider and better asphalt equipment than we've ever had for our own crews. They've over-doubled the amount of hot asphalt that they are able to throw. That is, last year, we were able to throw almost 3,000 tons of hot asphalt. Incredible amount. It's hard to visualize, you know, a ton, 2,000 pounds, 3,000 tons. Our crews are working very hard diligently. The milling machines that we're using, very effective. Our crews are working very hard at that. One of the things we're looking to do this year is to expand the roller system that we have. You'll be seeing this in later councils this fiscal year, so we have a better roller so that our crews are able to, again, have a better quality patch. If we don't have quality patches, they don't last as long, so you'll see that in the future councils. Reclamite is one of the preventative treatments that we've been using in the past few years effectively. We're very, very happy with the product that we get. Reclamite is applied within that first year or two after the new asphalt is done. You approved Reclamite and then also a CRF treatment under item 6D tonight, under the consent agenda. So, that was approved tonight. That is part of the overall pavement management program. We've been trying to expand those two different systems. Reclamite is used right after a pavement goes down, so you might think it's brand-new asphalt. Why are you putting down something on top of it? What it does is it rejuvenates the asphalt and lets it last a lot longer. You can actually extend the end of the life. So, you might not even... It doesn't look any different. It won't look any different, but at the end of the life, there are a lot of studies in a lot of other communities that have really seen a great return on investment, a key phrase we like to use. If you get good ROI on it, it's worth it. So, then, as we move forward, I'd like to show you briefly the CRF that we are starting to expand into. We did a great test section. I'll give full credit to our Engineering Division staff that worked with this corrective asphalt materials company, Cam Midwest. Cam Midwest has this product, CRF, that they normally dilute. They normally dilute the product and apply it directly to the pavement. Our staff worked with them and said, we need to try this full strength. Back in 2007, our staff worked with them and said, let's try this in one little test section and see how that looks. As you can see from the picture on the right, Kenyon Court, hopefully tonight you will approve us resurfacing Kenyon Court as one of the streets on there. If we would have done Kenyon Court with all of CRF, we wouldn't need to be taking If we would have done Kenyon Court with all of CRF, we wouldn't need to be taking that street to you today. The point is, is we're trying to find ways to stretch the life of the pavement. The need is far exceeds what we as a city are able to fund. So what we try to do is we try to stretch the life as one way to do that, to stretch our dollars. So moving forward then, we want to talk about, again, that savings recap. I want to give you some quick numbers. For us to resurface, it costs us about $30 a square yard. But reclamite costs us about 83 cents a square yard. CRF costs us about $2.50 a square yard. The point is, for, you know, you'll see more and more emphasis moving forward on this preventative maintenance from our staff, and we, as always, just ask for your support with that. We've been trying to build up and do small chunks to be able to prove its worth, and then we want to continue to expand that. And we're doing that so that we can extend the overall life of our pavement. That's one way for us to be able to catch up, so to speak. So we appreciate the additional funding the council's given that has been critical for us to start catching up, but that's only one piece of it. You have to also stretch the life of what's out there. So tonight, you have before you two different programs. You have the general resurfacing program, and you have the street and alley repair. The general resurfacing program is more of our larger streets, more of our bigger streets. You see the map in your packet. The maps up on the screen are never effective. They're impossible to read, so we'll not... We won't put it up on the screen before you. You can refer to your packet, and it's online for citizens. But then also, we also doing our pavement preservation, and we're also doing other... So again, this is also our crews and other work. And as the City Manager pointed out, there are a lot of other capital projects that we do as well. So this is a totality kind of system that we have. We appreciate your support, and tonight, we're asking for your approval of these agenda items.
Okay. Actually, probably 10 minutes was a little thin on this one because we've just about exceeded our time. But do we have questions for Mr. Karch? Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious. I'm really enjoying these before and after pictures that you have here. Have we considered putting before and after pictures of almost everything that we do on the city website to show citizens what we've been up to and the improvement?
We do that as much as possible, Alderman Black, on City Manager Monthly Reports. We do that online whenever possible. We... I completely agree with you. Sidewalks are a 50/50 sidewalk program that the council just approved here recently. One of the most effective water bill inserts we ever did that we had more response from than ever before was a picture showing half of a deteriorated sidewalk and half of a new sidewalk, the same sidewalk. We had more responses, hands down, from citizens than we'd ever had from a water bill insert. So pictures speak very well. I agree with that.
If I may have a second question? Just, I'm curious, this... The reclamite you're talking about, it seems like a no-brainer. What is... What, if any, is there environmental impact for using that product?
The downsides to reclamite is the application. If it's applied too thick, if it is not applied at the right temperatures, if it's applied too cold, then it takes too long to break. And then if you, you know, that's where you have to... We actually put... Whenever we blast out our flyers and we have... We actually put flyers on doors. We put flyers on cars. We send out press releases. Don't walk on it pretty pleased with sugar on top. We say it as nicely as we can because, you know, while it's breaking, before you can put the sand... You can't put sand on it right away until after it breaks. That's where it can track, and that's where it can cause issues, and we don't want to track that into people. We haven't had that issue yet, and education, I think, is a key component to make sure that it doesn't happen. But it... That's one of the big issues. Environmentally, we haven't really heard of any issues, nor have we seen any.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Okay. Any... We really don't have time for further discussion, but if there is, we... I don't see any? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Motion carries, and we move on. I'm glad you stayed here, Mr. Karch, because we probably have questions. Jim, you might want to...
Mayor, I think we're ready to go with just a recommendation on the bid award on the next one.
Okay, we don't need...
I think that pretty well covered both items, correct?
Okay.
So we're recommending the bid award for the 2013 street and alley repair to Row Construction Company in the amount of 1.3 million.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? So moved, moved by Alderman Fazini, second by Alderman Fruen. Discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Fruen.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along to item 7D, Amendment to the Bloomington City Code, Chapter 28, relating to the regulation of noise in the City of Bloomington. And we have approximately 15 minutes. Can we start out here with a motion to approve and a second? Is there a motion? Moved by Alderman Fruen. Is there a second? Uh... I'll second that. Okay. All right, so we have a first and a reluctant second. Now, we have... I know that there are questions about this. We do have 15 minutes. I'm not... Obviously, this is critical, so I'm not going to be very draconian. Who would like to speak to this? If I can get some idea, Alderman Lauer. Actually, let me write these down here so I don't forget. Alderman Lauer, Alderman Sterns, Alderman McDade, and Alderman Fazini. I will, with all due respect to my colleagues, since you're the reluctant second, how about if I start with Alderman Fazini and we'll go through, unless, but not least, Alderman Lauer? Okay. There are three... Oh, and everybody has, let's say, about two minutes to three minutes-ish. Okay.
I'll cede most of my time to the next person. There are three areas that I think we can actually improve the motion if we choose to. One of them is to make the construction or repairing of buildings and public improvements the same as blowers. One of them has a 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM time. The other has a 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM time. And I would propose that both of them start at 7:00 AM and end at dusk. And the third thing, snow removal, is not on here as an exception, and I do believe that's a public safety issue. If we have 12 inches of snow, we want people out there as soon as it's light. And not only our own crews, but the commercial companies who are removing snow from hospitals so people can get in. So I would think that we might want to consider amending the motion to include those three changes.
Okay. Since you didn't use your time, what I will do is we'll see what the other reactions are, and I'll come back to you if you want to make a formal motion to change for an amendment. Let's see, Alderman... Alderwoman McDade.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree with everything that Rob just said. I know we talked about a noise ordinance, and I don't know how long it's been. It feels like it's been a year, but it might not have been that long. Over a year, okay. Well, time flies. Anyway, I recall the 7:00 AM conversation because I think we'd gotten some complaints, especially in neighborhoods where there's some new construction going on. I've had those complaints myself, so I understand. Seven... Not myself, not my complaints, to me, from my constituents. Let me be clear, I never complain. 7:00 AM is what I remember, and I do remember the consistency between the construction and then the blowing sound. So I agree with your comments. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Sterns.
If I... Sure, are we going with 7:00 AM then? 7:00 AM to start?
It seems like that we have at least two Alderman's.
7:00 AM to start, and what would be the finish time?
You said dusk as a possibility?
Yeah, and I would certainly agree that...
Would that address the concerns that you were going to bring?
It would, and I wouldn't want to go any later than 7:00 because, you know, with the heat of the day and everything, I mean, it's really critical that people can get out there and do their job before, you know, it gets unbearable. Plus, it isn't a good idea to mow grass in the heat of the day because it... My understanding from landscapers, it isn't good for the grass, and then they have to be revived... It has to be revived with a lot more water. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Lauer.
I think there's a lot of holes in this. The economic impact alone of limiting construction on Sundays is immense. I've been involved with a construction company for over a decade, and I can't tell you how many weekends I worked, not because I wanted to, but because it needed to be done and because I needed the job. And there's a lot of fellows out there that could use the job right now and would be happy to work Sundays. I think that we need to rethink an awful lot of the holes that are in this ordinance or proposed ordinance. Not only the construction industry, but landscaping and mowing. Again, I'm not sure we really should be even limiting it to 7:00 AM till dusk. We have the ability to do things after dark and before daylight, and I don't know that that's necessarily something that we should be limiting. Something that has been brought up, and I hesitate to even bring it up, but I was involved for many, many years and still am to some extent heavily involved in aviation. And yes, we certainly took a lot of complaints. But in terms of sustainability that we continue to talk about here, for that airport to continue to operate, we have to allow folks to continue to operate out there. And yes, it's noisy. It is an airport. There are a lot of things that impacts in terms of noise, but on the other hand, there's an awful lot of good service that's provided. A lot of people like to complain about the light aircraft, but we need to remember that in order for a fellow to learn to drive one of those big jets, they've got to start out in a small one. And that includes our military aircraft as well. So there's a lot of impact that we're not really covering here that really should be thought through and probably excluded from the ordinance. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Fruen, did you have a question too? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't write you down.
Mayor, I think we all have different ways to edit this, and I guess everybody's talking about the time, focused on the time, and with our changing seasons in central Illinois, I'm kind of more of a fan of dawn to dusk. It changes throughout the year. You know, what is 7:00 to 7:00 one day is different. You know, we're in the solstice right now, June 21. I favor the dawn to dusk, but we can argue times all night long here. And I would like to see us handle this the same way that we did our ordinance earlier. We come back in a few months. We've been at this a long time. I'd like to get something plugged in, but come back maybe in the same timeframe and look at this again to see what we can learn from the contractors and from the businesses because this does have economic impact if we're going to start restricting hours. So that would be my suggestion in how we might rework this thing.
I'm assuming that's feasible? Ald... How's it called? Alderman...
If I could, I'd like to ask Rosalie Dodson, our Assistant Corporate Counsel, to come and help maybe just address or comment on a few of these topics and questions, comments that have come up. Rosalie is the one that's done most of the research and the drafting of this ordinance with input from many people, both inside and outside the organization. So Rosalie, you wanted to make a few comments.
And Jim Karch, I don't want to put you on the spot now, but with regard to the 6:00 AM start time, it was originally 7:00 AM last year when we drafted the ordinance. And Mr. Karch explained to me that per union contracts, our city employees, they start construction at 6:00 AM. And so to be fair and equitable across the board for Stark and Row and other constructors in the city, it's only fair to have a start time for 6:00 AM for everyone. And so that's why it was amended to 6:00 AM. Not sure if that clears that up or not.
Okay. Any other questions?
And with regard, if I can... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
As far as the airport and airplanes, the federal government has preemptive control over certain areas when it comes to noise, and one area is aircraft. And so the city can't regulate that if we wanted to. And so that's not included in this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Did we have a... Jennifer, you had a question? Alderwoman McDade?
Well, I just wanted to follow up then. I understand. Thanks for the clarification about the 6:00 AM. That's clear to me. So I would still have an interest in somehow better aligning the blower and the construction timing, and I just wanted to express that. So I guess if what we're hearing is 6:00 AM, that's, you know, for discussion, but I wanted to just express my interest in that.
And I think Alderman Fazini, if I'm not misunderstanding him, is prepared to make an amendment to this.
And before I do that, the 7:00 AM comes from an overriding concern to pay attention to our citizens, not our contractors only. The people who are having their children awakened at 6:00 in the morning when they don't get up until 6:30 or 7:00 to go to work are the ones who are talking to us, saying, "Hey, that's a bit early to have loud noises waking my family up." If our union contracts are at 6:00, we'll have to deal with that issue, I think, of how do we do something about that as opposed to not listening to what our citizens want, and that is 7:00. And I've talked to four lawn contractors today and said, "Can you live with 7:00?" And they said, "Yes, 7:00 will work for us." Okay? So I think the people involved probably could live with 7:00, and Jim's suggestion of dawn to dusk, dawn is 5:45 now or 6 o'clock, that's too early. I do think 7:00 for our general population is a number that everyone can live with, and we need to adjust back to the specific groups, I believe. So my proposal would be an amendment from 7:00 AM for both the blower and the...
Before we go down that path, though, we have a couple more questions. Go ahead. And Alderwoman Schmidt.
Hi, Rosalia. I really appreciate Alderman Lauer's comments about Sunday, and I'm looking at the construction or repairing of buildings and public improvement, and this is... Am I reading this right, that if I need to go out and, like, work on my house or something, I can't do that on a Sunday?
The way it's currently written, Sundays are excluded, so we can add that back in there?
I also have a problem with that, whether it be for construction workers or for, you know, Joe Citizen who can only do that on a Sunday. And I'm not sure why that day is excluded. I would... Whatever friendly amendments we're making, I'd like us to consider them for seven days.
So I think in terms of the record, I'm going to...
And I, I'm not sure why that day is excluded. I, I would, whatever friendly amendments we're making, I'd like us to consider them for seven days.
So I think in terms of the record, I'm going to, we do have two potential amendments, maybe, I know you have an amendment possible. Yours might be able to incorporate Alderwoman Schmidt's concerns. And Alderman Black, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this is for the chief, kind of switching gears away from the discussion about timeframe. I live on Main Street and I know I get a lot of calls about engines and specifically motorcycles this time of year, people early in the morning. To what extent are we going to be able to enforce any ordinance that we were to pass today?
Well, this ordinance wouldn't have an effect on the ordinances that in state laws we already have on the books for motorcycles. But any of those type of issues are, are difficult to, to deploy a lot of people to. And, and I'll point out that the majority of, when you pass these guidelines and ordinances, you're going to find the majority of people are accommodating and will adhere to whatever you decide. But I just want to point out, right now, if my officers were out, which is the busiest time of the, of the day, the 3 to 11 shift into the other shift, in effect, a lawnmower being mowed, someone mowing their lawn would be illegal. We're not going to have the time to go do that. If, if we're creating a lot more calls, we're going to prioritize them by more of the public disturbance type noises and we're not going to be looking for people mowing their lawn. Know that upfront, know that, that we, we could possibly do a complaint type process, but we have a difficult time getting to a lot of the music complaints and loud complaints now.
I guess, you know, I, I saw a number of emails today from, from people that were concerned about this specifically in regards to enforcement. And I'm, I'm wondering, is, is there any plans in the works for this summer? And if not, why? For decibel enforcement? I mean, there's a device that can measure decibels and it's kind of like a, a police officer testing someone's speed to make sure they're not speeding.
There isn't. There isn't. And it's, the purpose of this is not for vehicle speeds. There is, I, I don't see a day when an officer will be holding a decibel meter in his hand, standing on a corner waiting for cars to come by. The decibel meter is not intended for that. It's intended for more of the long-term continuous. There's a lot of issues and, and believe me, we're not experts at it and neither, none of my officers are experts at it. But there's a lot of conditions that have to apply to using a decibel meter. You know, what time of day it is, what the ambient sounds around you are, what the wind direction, that type of thing. So the ordinances that are in place allows for some, you know, pretty defined type of areas, like if it's coming off your property and you can hear it, if we're standing in the street and we're not on your property and we can hear the noise, then there's some enforcement ability. Again, the, the decibel meter would be for other, other types of purposes. And I, I think some legal background, that the reason it was put in was more of an industrial type noise, long, long duration type of noises that are particular to OSHA issues and noise pollution.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Now, we've just about exceeded our time. Alderman Fazini, which you'll make your motion. And then since Alderwoman Schmidt is concerned, has some of the same concerns, I want to make sure that she's good with whatever you're proposing. And then maybe she can even second it.
Okay. I, I propose we make the following changes to what has been recommended in the first motion. Under the construction or repairing of buildings and public improvement, we change the time from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We change that from 7:00 AM until dark. And instead of Monday through Saturday, we make it Monday, we make it every day, Monday through Sunday. That's first change.
Excuse me, first change.
Second change under item five, which is blowers, we do the same thing. Instead of 7:00 PM to, or 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM, we make it 7:00 AM until dark. So that they're both the same. Construction and blowers are on the same side. We also add an exception, and that is snow removal would be item eight under G, that that become the eighth exception because that's a public safety matter. And that's not just for our doing streets. F, under F.
F.
It's what? It's under blowers? Blowers and a.
Okay.
Last sentence, okay.
It's already there.
We're there. Then we don't need that.
So the, the others, is, does that, would you be willing to second?
No.
Oh, you want to speak to it?
That's fine. If, we do want to do the follow-up in September again. I don't know if that needs to be the motion, but I'd like to put it on the agenda.
That's part of our record in spirit of what we're doing.
Right.
And Alderwoman Schmidt, would you be willing to second that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So, sure. This is.
Is that the kind of motion that Jim Frue?
Yeah, he has to.
So are you making a friendly amendment and we're not going to second it? Are we going to vote on the amended motion? We got that.
Or we, I was thinking we would be voting on the amendment and then we'd vote on the motion as amended. But whichever, which, would you?
Would everyone?
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and do that since we're down that path, okay? All right. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? This is the amendment we're going to vote on first, and then we vote on the ordinance as amended. Sure.
The amendment being as outlined by Alderman Fazini.
Right.
And supported by Alderman Schmidt.
Correct.
I, I have a suggestion. Why don't we go back to the original motion, which was made by Alderman Frue and I seconded, that we accept the amendments to that motion agreeable to Alderman Schmidt.
Okay.
And then, then we're just voting once.
All right. Especially since we're doing roll calls.
If Alderman Frue would agree with that.
You are in agreement.
And I, I'm in agreement as the person who seconded.
Then I stand corrected. We're going to be voting on the proposal as the friendly amendment agreed by the maker and the seconded of the motion. Alderman Sage, you want a question, comment? Okay. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Again, a yes vote is supporting this as amended and the, the items that Alderman Fazini had mentioned.
Alderman Fazini.
Yes.
Alderman Frue.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
No.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes. Okay. Motion passes and we move on. Then to item seven E, approval of the hockey license between the City of Bloomington Central Illinois Arena Management Company and Illinois Pro Sports. And David, I think you wanted to make a few comments. Actually, let me see if we've got a, a motion to approve. Let's start again with the motion being just for consistency. Do we have a motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Schmidt and seconded by Alderwoman McDade. Thank you. Now, David, would you like to clarify this then, please?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to ask John Butler to come forward. John is president of the Central Illinois Arena Management. And as, just before John speaks, I, I think it's helpful to kind of go back and help the council understand that we certainly have had our challenges in recent years, not only with ownership of hockey teams, but also continuing to grow the, the spectator base. We're very fortunate that Mr. Butler and his team have extensive hockey experience. And even though their primary job is to oversee, manage the arena, they've spent a great deal of time, as I know personally, in helping the hockey, the indoor football, and even the basketball, helping them try to be profitable and successful. Tonight, not only are you being asked to approve a new hockey license, but I think it's important to point out what we see is different and what the future could be because the hockey team will be in a new league. And I've asked Mr. Butler to talk a little bit about that and how little different that might be. But how we do see this as an integral part of the, the ongoing minor league sports that will play in the Coliseum itself. So Mr. Butler, if you would just kind of give some overview comments.
Good evening. I think it's only appropriate that we're talking about hockey. I think we're on game six tonight of the Stanley Cup playoffs. What's that? Oh, yeah, so, okay, okay, okay. I thought what I would do tonight is just explain the new league that we're planning to join, the Southern Professional Hockey League. And then I'll give a little overview of the members of the Illinois Pro Sports, the local group that has stepped up to save hockey in central Illinois. The Southern Professional Hockey League is, has been in existence for nine years. It's a 10-team member. It's a high-class A minor league hockey team. We've been fortunate enough to have professional minor league hockey in central Illinois, anywhere from high-class A to double A to triple A. So it, it's right in the areas that, the classifications that our fans are accustomed to. And we're really excited about the opportunity. The Southern Professional Hockey League is somewhat unique in respects to, to the former league that we were involved in, the Central Hockey League. They are actually more of a player development league where the young players who aspire to higher classifications come to this league and hopefully they're talented enough where they get recruited to, to move on up hopefully in the NHL. The, the economic profile of the league, I think, is much more competitive to smaller mid-sized markets. And, and Bloomington, Peoria, those are the type of markets that really benefit working with the Southern Professional Hockey League. Because there's only a certain amount of revenue that team, minor league teams can generate in towns similar to Bloomington, Normal, and, and Peoria. So we've, the, the wonderful thing that we have with the new ownership group, Illinois Pro Sports, there's five of us involved. We have a combined 50 years of experience owning minor league hockey teams and operating minor league hockey teams. We're all from central Illinois. So we, we understand the business economic plan of how to run minor league teams. Two of, two of the gentlemen aren't here tonight. I'd briefly just like to mention their names. Bruce Sowers owned the Peoria Riverman for 18 years, very successful businessman in the Peoria community. He owns the Veldy Auto Group, Veldy Ford, Buick, BMW, GMC, and Cadillac. And Mr. Sowers, as I mentioned, owned the, the Peoria Riverman for 18 years, sold it in 2009 to the St. Louis Blues. The Blues had their triple A franchise until this, this past season where they sold the franchise to the Vancouver Canucks in the NHL. Vancouver decided to relocate their franchise. So Peoria and Bloomington were both looking for teams. So it was a classic case of great timing and really good relationships. Mr. Sowers is committed to saving hockey in central Illinois. And I know the, the four other fellows that I'll mention are, are as well. David Hunt is not here tonight. David also is a limited partner. He spent 32 years with the Illinois government. The last 14 years, he was the chief financial officer for the Department of Revenue. He's an Illinois Westland grad and lives in the Twin Cities, and he's excited to be part of that. I do, would like to introduce David Holt. David is the former vice president and general manager of the Bloomington Blaze. He will be our director of hockey operations. He'll oversee the day-to-day operations of the team and our staff. So we're very fortunate to have his talent, along with Bart Rogers, who's the vice president, general manager of Central Illinois Arena Management in the U.S. Cellular Coliseum. Bart actually spent 20 years with the Peoria Riverman. Seven of those years, he worked for the triple A St. Louis Blues. A very talented man, and so we're excited to have his input as well. And I've come full circle. I owned the team, co-owner in 2006 and 2007, the Bloomington Prairie Thunder. And, you know, I'm really excited that I can provide some assistance as well.
Well, I'm going to ask you to, to remain standing for a second.
Sure.
Do we have questions of Mr. Butler? Let me, let me see who has questions. Okay. All right. So let's, a, a lot, a couple of minutes apiece because we might also have debate on the motion. Okay.
A quick question. Out of the five owners, two of you are also the lead people in central Illinois. Do you perceive that as a plus or a minus? Legally, I think we've investigated and found out it's okay, but as a banker, it's a little uncomfortable to me.
Sure. Well, again, in 2006, 2007, I was co-owner of the hockey team. So that should not be any type of conflict at all. We have David Holt, who obviously is going to focus his time and energy on the team. Bart and I are there strictly as an advisory capacity. We are very excited that, you know, this opportunity is here for us. But with all the checks and balances and the, the relationships that we have with, with the city staff, I think things will be moving. I think it's a tremendous benefit to have the experience of, of the five individuals involved.
Sure. Alderwoman Sterns.
Thanks. John, thank you for your, you know, attention to our, our questions.
Sure.
And of course, you know, we're not questioning your experience or anything in hockey and all that sort of thing. And obviously, hockey is critically important to the, the Coliseum and to the city. So it's good to have, certainly we would always want to have a team. If you could help me, maybe it's a little bit the way it's written, the attendance incentive credit, which does allow for a different amount of, you know, rent lease, if, if you will. And I see you as somewhat of landlord and tenant.
Right.
So that's, that was the nature of my questions. But help me with understanding how this works.
Great question.
Thank you.
Over the past several years, minor league hockey has changed quite a bit in the way that building managers are negotiating their license agreements or rental agreements with teams. Basically what it does is it provides incentives for teams to get more fannies in the seats. And I think the more people that, that attend games, the more revenue that's generated through the building, through concessions, parking. And also it, it benefits the building from the standpoint of suite sales, building advertising. So it truly is a benefit. The more people in the building, the more revenues that are generated through sales of concessions and parking. So it actually increases revenue opportunities for the building by creating these incentives for the teams.
So, and just real quick on the mechanics of that, how, how does that work? You know, you, you do a turnstile count, is that it? Help me with just the.
Our, our ticketing system is through Ticketmaster. And we, we scan our tickets when, when patrons come through the building. So it's based on the actual attendance at the games. It's called drop count.
I'd read somewhere, I think this is a person went to a conversation, Alderwoman Sterns and I had before this. Did I read incorrectly someplace that there was a turnstile count? Or is that what you're calling a turnstile count?
It's a, it's a.
At the door?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So every, every person that brings a ticket in, we scan those tickets. There's an audit at the end of the game. So through the, through the Ticketmaster system. So based on the attendance incentives, you know, if there is a reduction in the rent, it's based on how many tickets were scanned for that particular event.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Now, we do have a few minutes left. Is there anybody, oh, Alderman Frue, did you have a question or did you want to?
I'll make a motion if you're ready for that.
Oh, we already have the motion and second.
We do.
Yeah. So do you have any further comments? Any others, anybody else want to comment? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
An enthusiastic yes.
Alderman Frue.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Motion carried. I'm not sure that enthusiastic yes actually, you know, gets more oomph to it, but thank you. Let's move on to city managers discussion. David, do you have some comments or words of wisdom for us?
Mayor and council, I, I do just want to share with the council that this past week we had a very exciting, interesting event. The City of Bloomington has become a member of the Illinois, or the International City County Managers Association Center for Performance Management. This CPM program is, is, has been in existence, I think, for probably around 10 years plus or minus. We often hear about how important it is to, to compare ourselves, any organization, with either benchmarking, comparing with other like. But what the city managers in the ICMA had found is oftentimes there wasn't consistency, you know, in really sometimes you'd be comparing apples and oranges instead of apples to apples. So what they did is they started this program so that for municipalities and all those who participated, there was a much more rigorous methodology used to try and get a, a true comparison so that you could really go out there and, and compare some of the performance metrics for, for not only the entity that was participating, but then you could pick those municipalities across the nation, in the state of Illinois, wherever that you really want to compare yourselves. This particular program will help us to not only have common measures, it's going to allow us to continue to encourage comparisons, to identify effective management practices, and learn from those high performers. And I think that's a, that last point is, is critical because oftentimes we want to learn from those who have really excelled and been creative, innovative, have been able to kind of refine their municipal services and operations to be really cost efficient and effective. So this is consistent with the council directive to continue to look for ways we can improve not only the, the quality of our services, but make sure that those are truly efficient. So this is Alex McElroy, who was up earlier, is kind of our, our lead coordinator for this particular program. We will share with you in a future more information. But I did want you to, to, to understand that we are embarking on this. We are trying to ensure that anything we do in participating really has real life and day-to-day value to us. So you'll be hearing more when we begin to collect the data, submit it, and especially more so when the reports come in, which would be later this year or the first part of next year. So it's just a, a quick update on some, a new particular milestone. We participated in a pilot program, and now we've kind of jumped in with both feet. And we look forward to how this can benefit us in our operations in continuing to provide quality services at a reasonable cost. So that's what I just wanted to share with you. I'll turn it back to Mayor, you and the council.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, ICMA has come a long way. When I was hired in 1986, I was their first director of research. They'd, they'd never had a methodologist even before. And anyway, I don't want to relive those days. But if, just a, a few things. First of all, I want to say happy birthday to our city manager. Happy birthday. And I want to thank Alderwoman Schmidt and Alderman Black for handling the mayoral open house on Friday. Thank you both very much. And I understand that there was really terrible weather that helped keep people away. So unfortunately. But I also want to thank Alderman Dave Sage. In fact, we had a de facto town hall meeting at Luther Oaks last week. I mean, it pretty much operated like the town hall meeting that you and I had that David Hales, you know, came to in Ward 7, except that we didn't have David there. But basically, we took lots of questions, had a great evening, and thank you. And we've promised to come back. I forgot when we said we'd come back, but whenever we come back, I'll be back.
In the fall.
In the fall, okay. Fall. So I'll just have to tell Bobby and put that on the schedule. Thank you so much. And the reason why I asked them to handle the open house, the mayoral open house on Fridays, because I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It was actually a four-day event. It actually is not ending until this evening. And I was there for two days. The, the conference started on Friday and Saturday. days. The conference started on Friday and Saturday. It was really fascinating at so many levels to talk to mayors that mostly they're representing cities of 35,000 to 50,000 and above. And it was just really, really interesting to do that kind of networking and to compare and contrast ideas. And I also wanted to congratulate our mayor to the north, Mayor Coos. He was not able to accept the award, but it's actually an honorable mention he had for, let's see, the 2013 Mayor's Climate Protection Awards, and they received an honorable mention. And they had this EV Town program that was designed to establish Normal as a model electric vehicle community. And so, anyway, we're, Bloomington and Normal are getting national kudos, and I'm not sure how you apply for these things, but we're gonna figure out some way for Bloomington to get them some point in the future, let me tell you. And anyway, that's, my favorite quote, though, is one of the mayors, actually this is Mayor of Sacramento, said, "A mayor has to have the determination, dogged determination of a drill sergeant, at the same time has the heart of a social worker." So, I think I need to, I think that's sort of me, but I'm gonna try to aspire to that. So, anyway, thank you again all very much. I wanna turn it over to the Alderman. What comments do the Alderman have? We'll start out with Alderman Fruen.
Two quick things, Mayor. As we approach Fourth of July, it reminds me of the appreciation we have for all the city employees and staff that help with our holidays. So, whether it's fireworks, parks programs, parades, road races, et cetera, I think, to me, that's a huge contribution to quality of life. So, I hope that we can continue to do all those things that we have in place, and even maybe more so. I know there's expense with some of these activities, but it's important. It's part of our history. So, with Fourth of July coming up, I hope we all participate in some of those activities. The second comment is, I'm very glad that we passed two ordinances tonight that have been with us a long time. And sometimes, it's hard to get our hands around it and find agreement with everybody, but there are certain issues that it's very unlikely that we're gonna have total agreement. So, Mayor, you said in one of your comments earlier, sometimes it's, we agree to disagree on some of the finer points, and I think that's what we got to. I am not a fan of some governmental bodies that have second and third readings. I'm not trying to encourage that, nor would I suggest that. But to the extent that we can, through our website or any communications we have, let people know, let the community know. I know we're doing our best, that this is coming up. Come to the Friday mayor's meeting, provide your input through emails, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it amazes me, let me shoot off for a minute to the Eastside Highway meeting that was last week or so. It's amazing to me that some people, whether it's the noise ordinance, or the animal ordinance, or the Eastside Highway, that it's the first time they're hearing about something. And so, to the extent we can get that communication out there to encourage early participation, I think we'll do all ourselves a favor. So, I'm glad we got it implemented. I think David Sage had a nice idea to follow up on some of these things. They're very controversial. So, maybe that's a practice. We'll see how that goes, but maybe that's a practice we implement going forward. Lots of times, we plug it in, and it just stays plugged in, and we don't adjust it very well. But this gives us a good framework for that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fruen. Alderman Fazini.
If memory serves, this will be the 18th consecutive year that Dr. Edwin Shardle will be presenting his views on the state of McLean County. It's sponsored by Illinois Wesleyan University. It'll start at 7:00 tomorrow morning at the Hanson Center. If you haven't ever been to one of these, you're missing something. He has a unique perspective. He's not just an economist. He's an economist who presents to what happens in our county, and he uses our statistics. So, I would encourage anyone who wants to learn more about our county to get up early tomorrow. 7:00, Hanson Center, Illinois Wesleyan University. I would all second that. That's highly recommended. And actually, what was it, two years ago? For some fluky reason, I won Economist of the Year because of these projections? Boy, my economist colleagues at Illinois Wesleyan were joking. You don't want me to be your economist. And Alderman Sterns.
Thanks. Just on the Fourth, a lot of us, I think, will be out at Miller Park, hopefully. That's kind of the tradition. And if you get a chance to walk through the Vietnam-Korea Memorial, I encourage you to do so. I appreciate the update, David. I've been in conversation with a gentleman who is a Vietnam vet, Stan Edmonds, and we've been talking for a good year, year and a half, maybe also parts, because it does belong to the City of Bloomington, about restoring the broken flame that it is no longer exists. Apparently, it was vandalized. I don't know what happened to it, but it's not there. And also, the names, some of them, depending on the direction of the wind and the water, are being washed away. So, I'm really, really pleased that we are working, we are getting to the point where we're, the city is going to work on a restoration, some restoration project, and I'm really, really excited and encouraged about that. Although, I do think that we could do it, or we could certainly, we could get, I think, a lot of private support for this as well, if that's something, you know, that's the way I thought it would go originally, but it's, apparently the city, it does belong to the city. So, really encouraged about that. I hope you will all take the time to take a look at it, because it needs some help. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sterns. The executive session site section, what's necessary there? Just from our executive session earlier?
That's always there in case the council...
It's just, we don't have any report, it's like the other thing.
Yeah. It would just be subject to whether or not the council saw a need for a late-night...
All right. So, then, we have a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Moved by Alderman McDade, seconded by Alderman Sterns. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?[1783.76]